So today is May 3, 2022. Our regular council meeting calling to order and notice to the public that council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet? I'm sorry.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Right here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Salas?
Present.
Councilmember Shimoney?
Present.
Excellent. Well, with that, let me go with, say, Councilmember McCarthy. Would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I would.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and the Constitution, our nation under God, in this world with one routine church and star.
Thank you. And let's go with Councilmember Aslan, our mission statement, please.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Salas, our land acknowledgement, if you don't mind?
Honored to do so, Mr. Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of these areas indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. We do have a couple here for public participation, Agenda Item Number Four. And we'll start with Wendy White.
This doesn't bend quite well. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I will do my best to keep this within three minutes. I'm here just because I know that some of you know what efforts Daryl Marx and I have been doing to create community assistance teams of Flagstaff. My name is Wendy White, of course. Well, maybe not, of course, those of you who don't know me. Daryl is actually the indigenous advisor, student advisor up at Flagstaff High School, and he's also an indigenous activist in town. Last year, he got the JFK Award, Courageous Profiles in Courage Award, and he's quite active in the indigenous community. And he actually was the one that inspired me and pushed me into getting us up and running, which we are literally going to be doing here soon. But I wanted to introduce what we're doing, and we are Community Assistance Teams of Flagstaff, also known as CATS of Flagstaff. We are currently converting a 40-foot school bus into a mobile outreach bus with a shower installed in it. There's a bathroom in it, shower. We have seating area. We will have staff and volunteers onboard. We will be moving the bus from location to location on a daily basis throughout the city to try to reach out to people who are unsheltered or undergoing any kind of crisis, to reach them and try to engage them in services. And we're not going to provide services, per se. What we're going to be is kind of a mobile broker, if you will, so that we can engage people and get them connected with available services. We will be providing showers, however, and we will be providing other, like, just kind of almost a mobile day center kind of thing, where people can come and sit if they need to, hang out. Even if they're slightly inebriated, they'll be able to sit there. We can help them out. We'll get food out to them. We'll be doing hygiene products, that kind of thing. So this, we are actually really excited because we did get our 501(c)(3) letter of approval in March, and we are almost done with the bus. And I can tell you that I had to wipe off the sawdust from my face to come in here today because I am personally out there banging nails and putting things in the, put all the flooring down myself. And so we're at the point now where we've got two events coming up, which I'd love to invite you to, and we'll be sending out a notice on June 23, 24, and 25, thanks to a slight, a small grant from the Sustainability Commission. We're going to be bringing two Dine artists up from Phoenix, we're young and upcoming artists, to muralize the exterior of the bus with beautiful indigenous-themed and South West theme mural. And that's going to be a public event. Details will follow. And then on July 13 is our launch date for the bus. So we already have several other organizations in town. Am I done?
Which other organizations in town?
Just other organizations in town who also will be using the bus to do some outreach so they'll be able to use our bus as kind of a mobile outreach center for their organizations as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Wendy. I have the next public participant as Jim McCarthy.
These comments are mine and do not represent the city or this council. I address my comments to council and Eva Putzova. Eva, you contacted me and city leadership. You requested that I publicly apologize for my statements made during the council selection discussions. During the discussion, I said, and I'll quote here, "This whole conversation is awkward." The reason that it is awkward is because one candidate asked that it be in public. So I just think we should note that the candidate created an awkward situation," unquote. Discussion was awkward, as evidenced by laughter when I said that it was. However, just because something is awkward does not mean that it is inappropriate. When the mayor stated that you had done nothing wrong, I let that stand. In public sessions or executive sessions, it is my right to speak openly regarding appointments. When a candidate requests to have their evaluation in public, they are, in effect, giving permission to have candid comments made about them in public. Staff and council tried to make a fair process. However, in my six years on council, this was the first time that a person requested to have their personnel matters discussed in public. We had not reviewed the process with that in mind. That is one factor that made this situation awkward. I have been questioned as to why I did not support moving your application forward. Another council member stated their reasons in the newspaper. I see no need to unnecessarily list the reasons that I oppose or support each candidate's appointment. Going forward, Eva, an approved process will help. You and I vary on approaches, but I believe that we are both honest and passionate leaders who base our positions on integrity, even when we disagree. Thank you.
With that, do we have any public participants online at this time?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. That does bring us down to Agenda Item Number Five, City Council Appointment. I would just like to first thank every single candidate who put their name in the hat, all 14, and the six before us today particularly. This is not an easy decision on your part, and I will say that, on my behalf, this is one of the hardest decisions I've ever made on council. And luckily, it was a consideration of, well, a good problem, right? This is a good problem because we have so many great candidates before us wanting to be appointed, wanting to put themselves forth, their minds, their very selves to be amongst us here on city council. And I just want to first thank you all for being a part of it. And also for making this decision so difficult. We have a lot of great people before us. With that, I would like to move to appoint Kara House to this Flagstaff City Council.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Aslan and thirded by Councilmember McCarthy. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Salas?
I want to create a space of gratitude and a big grateful heart to all 14 applicants who stepped up and bring forth their intent to serve our community. And I do recall in the public discussion that the greatest value that I'm looking for in a successful applicant is someone who can help us bring unity and cohesion and diversity on council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember McCarthy?
I want to reiterate what the mayor just said, that this was a difficult decision. All the candidates were in the running, so to speak. The ones that we interviewed were all absolutely top-notch. And I just want to ask you, don't go away. We need you. So thank you for running, and I do support the motion on the table.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. And I will also note that we do have some spots here for write-in candidates this year, and I'm urging everyone to be willing to put their name in the hat on that front as well. I think it's extremely important, and all of you are just, would be amazing here on council, and that's why the decision was so difficult. So, City Manager?
I believe Councilmember Shimoney has a comment.
Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. You know, I just wanted to also just echo your comments, Mayor, and just say how grateful I am for everyone who stepped forward and how grateful we are. It means a lot to the community. You know, the work we do for the community is extremely important, and our engagement as citizens in every capacity is so important, especially as an elected official. And so please do stay involved, as was mentioned, and you're needed. You're needed amongst Team Flagstaff. So thank you all for stepping forward and very, very excited about the motion on the table and the work ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I am not going to say anything that hasn't already been said. It took courage for all of you to be here, to apply, and to go through the process, and I hope to see each and every one of you on the campaign trail or working on commissions. There's so many different ways to be involved. So thank you for your efforts. I am too excited for the motion on the table, and we are very lucky in this community to have so many people who want to help us along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, so I think, Jim, I'd like to parse words with you a little bit. I really don't see this as a difficult choice. This choice was a joy and a pleasure, and the deliberation and decision process that I personally went through, the discernment that I took over the weekend, and the collective conversations we had as a council were incredibly encouraging, left me with a lot of joy and confidence that our city is going to be in good hands for years to come. I really do hope that many of you in this room, if you all ran, that'd probably be kind of messy. But I certainly do hope that some of you step forward and choose to pursue a seat up here with us on your own merits and according to the process that we're supposed to follow with respect to the voters. It just really was a pleasure of deliberation, and I couldn't be more pleased with the outcome, and I'm excited to get going with our new council.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. And I also would just like to thank the council for the deliberations. We took time to really think about this through multiple sessions, and I just appreciate everyone's deliberation through the process and self-awarement about the situation to be able to move forward. So with that, there is a motion on the table to appoint Kara House to Flagstaff City Council. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Kara House, please.
Mayor, if I might, before Ms. House, Councilmember House takes her seat at the dais, we would like to go ahead and have her sworn in by our presiding Judge Tom Shotina.
Well, I told them to make all six to make sure that we have the right label on them. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kara House.
I, Kara House.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona?
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties?
Of the office of Flagstaff City Council member?
Of the office of Flagstaff City Council member.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you all again to all the applicants in this process. With that, we have your name tag all set up right there. There will be a permanent one here shortly, but for today, it's paper. Well, thank you. Agenda Item Number Six is Proclamations and Recognitions. We will start here with the Mental Health Awareness Month, and we do have an important crew here to accept. I will, let's go up to the front here and get some pretty pictures while awarding all the applicant, or applicants, all the, those who are involved in the very important proclamations that we have to fill today. And yes, there is a stack, so, one more, please. May is a busy month, but I would like to invite Ryan and Sarin to come up here for So it is Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. Prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and there is strong research that animal companionship, humor, spirituality, religion, recreation, social connections, and work-life balance can help all Americans protect their health and well-being. Mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation and our community. With effective treatment, those individuals' mental health and other chronic conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Flagstaff in a call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Flagstaff to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the needs for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions, and join Southwest Behavioral and Health Services in their vision of eradicating the stigma that is related to those who struggle with behavioral health issues. Thank you. If you'd like to say a word, you're more than welcome to. Sure, I'll say a few things.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for that proclamation. I think, over the last few years, more and more, we're seeing how important mental health is for a person's overall quality of life, and more and more, we're seeing that mental health is so much a product of our experiences and our environment, more so than a reflection of a person's character. And so I'm extremely excited to see all of the progress that is being made, both throughout the country and locally in Flagstaff. By mid-July, there is going to be a three-digit phone number, 988, available to anyone in the country 24/7 who's experiencing a mental health crisis. Here locally, we have so many efforts that have been made, that are being made on an ongoing basis, to address mental health throughout the community, including the care unit that Terrors Health and the City of Flagstaff have put into place just a little over a month ago, as well as so many other efforts that social service and mental health agencies in this community are making. So thank you again for the proclamation, and we will keep up the hard work.
Let's get a picture here. So, we'll get a front, but you know, yep. You two are the important ones. Stand up here. Oh. No, I need to be up here. May is also Asian American and Pacific Islander Month, and we do have an individual online here from the Diversity Awareness Commission to be able to accept electronically and say a few words. The City of Flagstaff celebrates the rich cultural traditions and proud ancestry of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and we recognize the vital contributions Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made to strengthen and diversify our community. Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have played a vital role in the early development of Flagstaff through family-owned businesses and neighborhoods and creation of transportation infrastructure. Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have continued to contribute to the building of a vibrant Flagstaff community as educators and administrators, business owners, sports figures, and in public service. Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders continue to play an integral role in the shaping, developing, and creation of the future of all sectors of our city. Despite the invaluable contributions and achievements of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, their narratives and roles have been consistently underheard and undervalued in American history, literature, and education. Hate crimes against the AAPI community have escalated during the COVID-19 pandemic and surpassed previous all-time highs on a national level and in Arizona. During AAPI Heritage Month, we counter discrimination through celebration of the AAPI community, and we focus on education in the history of AAPI communities in Flagstaff and nationally. Flagstaff City Council established the Commission on Diversity Awareness to advise the city council on issues and methods in promoting diversity awareness within the City of Flagstaff and in fulfilling the charge the Commission on Diversity Awareness supports, the designation of May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in unison with national and statewide observances. I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do proclaim May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Flagstaff. And with that, I will turn it over to the, our online, Jean.
Jean, you're going to need to unmute your mic.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the proclamation, and I just might add that the Pioneer Museum created an absolutely delightful and informative video, which can be accessed through their website, on the history of Asian American roots in Flagstaff, Arizona, and I'm very proud to be part of a city that acknowledges this, and just once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean. With that, we are next on to Building Safety Month. And who do we have here? Oh, Mr. Folk. Let's pull him. Bring all the cool kids up here. Yeah. Oh, you can come over on this side. We can get pretty pictures. The City of Flagstaff is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. Our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building, safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, and tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And safety for all, building codes in action. The theme for Building Safety Month 2022 encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all of our benefit. Each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Therefore, I, Mayor Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Building Safety Month. Thank you all for being here. All right. You want to hold this puppy?
Yes.
All right. Yep. Bring it on in.
Yes.
You can hold on to that, too. It's fancy, it has a little.
I have it to my wallet.
Thank you. Thank you. It's also National Nurses Week.
I'll give it to my wife.
Thank you. Thank you. There are more than 70,000 registered nurses in Arizona, comprising Arizona's largest healthcare profession. The depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of Arizonans in a wide range of settings. Demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging population, the continuing expansion of life-sustaining technologies, and the explosive growth of home healthcare services. More qualified registered nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community. The cost-effective, safe, and quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an ever-more-important component of Arizona's healthcare delivery system in the future. Therefore, I, Mayor Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May 6 through the 12th, 2022, as National Nurses Week, and ask that all residents of Flagstaff join me in honoring the registered nurses who care for all of us, celebrate registered nursing accomplishments and applications, and efforts to improve our healthcare system, and show our appreciation for the nation's registered nurses, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year. And thank you, Jennifer, for being here, and if you'd like to say a few comments, you're more than welcome to, or we can take a pretty picture, too. We also have a very important week this week, that is Teacher Appreciation. Thanks for being here, Austin. You know, through their dedicated efforts to ensure our children learn the knowledge and skills needed to be successful in higher education, careers, and life, teachers are vital in helping build the future. Our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students, and teachers play a critical and crucial role in shaping our children, and to the people they will become by supporting them through their youth and teaching lessons that will have an impact on students they will carry through life. Our community recognizes and supports teachers in educating the children of this community. Therefore, I, Mayor Deasy, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through May 6, 2022, as Teacher Appreciation Week, and on behalf of the City of Flagstaff, extend appreciation to all the teachers in public, private, and home schools. And, oh, well, you gotta jump on here, too.
Well, thank you. So while I don't work for FUSD, I would hope that all of you and you have signed FEAs, union requests, so that they can fully be at the bargaining table with FUSD, so, like I said, I hope all of you and you have done that. That's my...I know I have, and I work at a charter school. I think all workers should be unionized. Thank you.
It is also Bike Month in Flagstaff, and fortunate to be able to be there yesterday morning for the inaugural bike ride of May 1st, which has been happening now for 20 years, but despite that, we do also want to read it again today. So bicycling represents one of the most environmentally responsible, clean, efficient, economic, and healthy forms of transportation, and the City of Flagstaff and Flagstaff Biking Organization recognize the importance of a bicycle-friendly community. Bike Month raises public awareness about the need to improve bicycle infrastructure in the community, to encourage more people to commute by bicycle, and bicycling improves air quality, reduces greenhouse gas emissions, and supports Flagstaff's carbon neutrality goals. Bicycling enhances mobility and helps manage traffic congestions, and is an excellent, low-impact aerobic activity that improves health and reduces stress. Riding a bicycle helps all of us connect to our community and feel a sense of place. Therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Bike Month in Flagstaff. And thank you all. Yes, I'm holding on to this one, so. With that, we will get back to the rest of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a comment?
Yes.
Since we're still on the agenda item six, Proclamations and Recognitions, this week is also Clerks Week, and I want to recognize our City Clerk, Ms. Stacey Southberg, and our Deputy City Clerk, Ms. Stacey Forbar, and the rest of the Clerk's Office. Happy Clerks Week.
Yes, absolutely.
Also, this week is National Travel and Tourism Week. I do recognize all of our partners involved in travel and tourism. Thank you for everything you do for our community. And tomorrow is National Travel and Tourism Service Day that's being hosted and organized by Discovery Flagstaff tomorrow, 10:30 a.m., meetup at the Milligan House. And on Saturday is National Train Day, there's an event at the Amtrak station. We have a good following internationally, because we have...there's a live camera at the train station, which has over 10,000 fans internationally that watch us the train every day.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is our Council Liaison Reports, and happy to go around the circle. Councilmember Salas, would you kick us off?
On behalf of Metroplan, I represent Metroplan, the statewide rural transportation advocacy council that held its monthly meeting last Monday. It was a very informative meeting, and we also had a presentation from the ADOT's Governor Relations Director with regard to their specific project going forth with mega grants, and I spoke...I was put on the spot about the Downtown Connection Center...oh, the Downtown Mile Project, which the City of Flagstaff, in partnership with BNSF, and of course, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer, and Metroplan, and multiple partners, including Napster Mountain Line, is putting together a grant, a federal grant, for the Downtown Mile Project. And I had a kind of on-the-spot presentation on the Downtown Mile Project at the R-TAC, so hopefully, when the time comes, we'll be able to get...to secure our tax support on the project, on the grant application as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report this week. I was in executive session during the Sustainability Commission on Thursday, and at a housewarming party for the Crown Hotel during the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council meeting, so back to being in person, and it's very difficult to be two places at once all of a sudden again, which is a good problem, I guess, but I'll wrap back around with all of you on those reports.
Thank you, I feel you there, brother. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Three of these council members, myself and the two to my left, serve on the Metroplan Board, and typically, we've been meeting on Wednesdays. I just want to note that the meeting times have been changed to Thursdays, first Thursday in the month, 1:00, so two days from now, we'll be having a Metroplan meeting. Thank you, just in case anybody's interested.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. I don't have anything for today, but Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to do a quick acknowledgement that the Water Commission has been working so hard. You should just see the packet that they get every month. A lot going on with that. They have been looking at the regional plan and their capital improvement plan, a lot of moving parts. Stay tuned for more on that. And Monday is the BPAC Commission Meeting, 4:00 to 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Skip, Councilmember House. Just kidding. Welcome, Councilmember House, just wanted to say that. Just a couple things, nothing from last week, but there is an Indigenous Commission meeting tomorrow, along with the Transportation Commission, that's also tomorrow, and then on Thursday, there's a Bicycle Advisory Committee meeting, and so I'll look forward to giving you some updates on that next week, or next time we have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. And Councilmember House, though you may not have it right now, we're looking forward to your reports back from your commissions, and yeah, we'll be there with you, so, thanks. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number Eight, our Appointments, and first is Agenda Item 8A, the Beautification and Public Arts Commission, and I may need to pull it up, but is, I believe, Councilmember McCarthy is first, or is it Councilmember Aslan?
Councilmember McCarthy is listed first.
Okay, then, Councilmember McCarthy.
So, I would like to make an appointment, I move that we make the appointment of Claire Johnson to the Beautification and Public Arts Commission, with the term expiring in June of 2025.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. All right, next up is Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you very much. So it's always a pleasure and an honor to make these appointments. It's one of the fun parts of this job, and it's particularly fun when the cycle gives me the opportunity to enthusiastically support a candidate. I'm going to nominate Chris Beryl for a term expiring in June 2025. He is in the audience here, if needed. He's served on commissions before, and very pleased to see him step forward in the name of public service to apply for the council position recently, so love to see what else he has in store for the city.
Thank you, I second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimously, and I will just mention that we had 13 applicants, I'm counting here, to the two positions.
It's really nice to see so much enthusiasm.
It is, so thank you all for stepping up, and this, I really appreciate everyone putting their name in, and we do have also a lot of commissions that need some help, so I appreciate those who are putting themselves out for civic service. All right, with that, we are down to Agenda Item 8B, this is the Sustainability Commission, to make one appointment to a term expiring October 2022, and I'll kick it off to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I nominate Paul Byer to the Sustainability Commission, with the term expiring in October of 2022.
I very enthusiastically second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are down to Agenda Item Number Nine, our Consent Items, and I would like to move to approve all of the agendized items as written. Councilmember McCarthy?
I would like to pull Item 9A.
All right.
So if you want to amend your motion...
I'd like to amend, yep, amend the motion to be items, consent items, 9B through E, and then we will move on to 9A.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries. Councilmember McCarthy.
All right, Item 9A is a motion to approve a contract with Legends District for an electronic billboard in the Phoenix area with a charge of $78,000. So I'd like to give a little background. Billboards used to be a major eyesore in Flagstaff. Route 66, next to the train tracks, was just a continuous row of billboards, and city staff, city council, city activists spent a lot of time getting rid of those billboards. This is a motion asking us to support a billboard in a different city. I think that's completely contrary to our values. Our values are that billboards are inappropriate, and this city is very strict on this. We certainly don't allow electronic billboards. I find electronic billboards to be more egregious than the standard, old-fashioned billboards, so I will not be supporting the motion to approve $78,000 to build a billboard that's against our values.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Aslan.
Well, Councilmember McCarthy, I deeply appreciate you putting some thought into this and bringing this forward. I have to say that I wholeheartedly agree with your logic and your assessment, especially given our dark sky mission and those values. It would be nice if we had, on part of our lobbying efforts, an effort throughout the state of Arizona to ban electronic billboards throughout the state. There's always efforts at the state legislature to have those crop up in our more rural areas and darker places, and it's an existential threat to dark skies. It's also not carbon neutral, if we want to keep nitpicking about these things. So I appreciate you bringing this forward, and in the spirit of what you're trying to do, I stand with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mr. Aslan.
I do have interim Deputy City Manager Heidi Hansen on the line for a comment.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, welcome. Councilmember House to the council, it's nice to see you sitting up there. Heidi Hansen, interim economic, interim Deputy City Manager, and also Economic Vitality Director. The billboard is not electronic, it is a static billboard, so it doesn't impede dark skies, and in the actual area that is located, which is in Phoenix, at our largest target audience, it is in the Legends District, and it wouldn't even impede their dark skies if they even had a dark skies ruling. We also have, noting that there's been questions about this in the past, we actually have a small PowerPoint available to share a little bit more information about this particular item, that we would love the opportunity to do so with you before you actually have your vote. Our CVB Director Trace Ward and our Marketing and Media Relations Manager Lori Pappas are available to share this presentation. Thank you, Trace, for popping on, and we would appreciate that opportunity to give the history and to share with you a little bit more about why this... and to share with you a little bit more about why this out-of-home installation is very important to our overall visitation and program. If we would have that flexibility, we would appreciate that, Mayor.
Heidi Hansen, and Vice Mayor, did you have a comment before we?
I just wanted to thank you for clarifying some things, Deputy City Manager, and I myself would like to see that PowerPoint. Thank you.
Yep, so please proceed.
Thank you.
Trace, you're muted.
Oh, I am?
You aren't now, sorry.
Okay, sorry. So, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Trace Ward, CVB Director, let me go ahead and share my screen.
Hello?
Trace, I think someone's asking you a question.
Right, very sorry to interrupt. I believe Councilmember Shimoney had a comment before the presentation starts. Sorry, Mayor, if you will. Thank you.
Councilmember Shimoney, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I was just going to express support for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Trace, please proceed.
Oh, thank you. And can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to try to get this to open more. How did that work?
Perfect.
Okay, terrific. So, again, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Trace Ward, CVB Director. Discover Flagstaff, along with the Appointed Tourism Commission, is requesting and advising the renewal of a two-year contract for an outdoor static, not electric board located in downtown Phoenix to inspire and motivate responsible visitation to our number one, from our number one market. As most marketing strategies, a mix of media is required. Print, digital, broadcast, out-of-home is necessary to reach audiences with multiple ways on different platforms as people consume media differently these days. And throughout their day, they consume differently. This out-of-home, with out-of-home, this board allows us great presence with our number one market. Four out of 10 visitors to our beautiful mountain town are from metro Phoenix. And now, more than ever, this tactic supports the marketing plan to this critical origin market, which is proven instrumental in the city's economic recovery. Discover Flagstaff began this relationship with the Legends District because we were able to acquire premium placement at a reasonable price to a relatively targeted audience for adventure seekers with some means to travel. This is the, all of the baseball fans, the event goers, dining out, and those going to come. Through our creative messaging, and you're going to see that on the next few slides, we're able to demonstrate our values and how we want people to visit. That's pets on leashes, stay and play distance, and mask responsibly. And a few slides later, you'll see creative supporting sustainability and carbon neutrality. So, like all of the creative that we've done for this out-of-home spot, we highlight assets that are likely to inspire and motivate travel and support our tourism economy. But we always, always weave in imagery and messaging to support responsible visitation. Examples of this are stay and play responsibly, Flagstaff Trails Initiative, you know, follow the leash laws, Four Seasons, and many, many other creative treatments that follow the same thing. And you'll see that on more slides coming up shortly. In 2021, Arizona was listed as the fourth fastest-growing state and averaged 269 daily new residents moving into the state. That's more than 98,000 new people that we, that may not be aware of Flagstaff and the beauty that is here. This board delivers results. We get about nine, a little over nine million annual impressions. And in that is three million sports venue attendees, over a million theater attendees, 300,000 annual convention attendees, which of course is coming back. That wasn't the case during the pandemic. But not to mention all of the other permanent residents and business folks downtown. This gives you another angle of the previous billboard that we had up, installation, and that allowed us to message, place, stay, and distance, mask responsibly, and other things too. So, there is flexibility for us on these change-outs and boards to message things that are important to the community, not just visitation. The Legend Districts operate, the Legends District operates within a special city of Phoenix entitlement area called Jefferson Street Signage District. It focuses on entertainment. This is an example of the foot traffic that our out-of-home placement is able to command at the intersection of Fourth and Jefferson. Okay, so, this is the current creative that is up in this space right now. The illustration exemplifies Flagstaff's great outdoors and beauty. Our pledge to keep our wild places wild, climate action, Four Seasons calls for the need for sustainability and respect of the land, and to stay and play responsibly, which has been a campaign even prior to the pandemic. Let me give you a closer look at what is up there currently on Fourth and Jefferson. So, it has our stay and play responsibly, carbon neutrality, which will direct folks to our website, which they can get further information on these same things. All right, so Discover Flagstaff's board is shown boxed in yellow as Location 7A. This provides a bird's eye view of the downtown area, showing a proximity to large sporting event and event venues, again at the corner of Fourth Street and Jefferson, capturing automobile and foot traffic in the area. Let's see here. So, NAU continues to partner with the Legends District, also seeing value in these customers. This board is on Seventh Street in Washington, and NAU also runs advertising on a variety of other units in Legends District. Other destinations run in the Legends District as well, including Wickenburg and Cottonwood. So, Legends continues to understand Flagstaff's needs to communicate our values and help us amplify key messages. And in this example, it demonstrates through added value with tickers. Stay and Play Responsibly is one such campaign which folds in, and it also folds in winter recreation and fire awareness messaging. This is added value. We don't pay for this, and we can message to these nine million viewers, people that come through this area, anything we want. It could be fire aware, which we do quite a bit of, which is highly valuable real estate that we get free of charge. So, the budget is 78,000 annually. That's a 25% discount, not including all the free real estate that we get to message on while we're down there. And this, this is a no increase since 2017. So, the Legends have really stepped up to give us a great value in our number one market. So, I want to thank you for hearing me out on this. I am happy to take any questions, of course. And I wanted to let you know that we have our Tourism Commission Chair on the line. We also have Legends Representative on the line, and his name is Blake Edwards. I will quit sharing at the moment, if I can figure out how to do this, and go back to myself.
Thank you.
May I, if I may interject, thank you, Trace Ward, for that presentation, having that ready. I also wanted to let those that are viewing to know that what I wrote in the chat as an example of what you were seeing, it's hard to tell when you're looking at a billboard that is that big. But when you saw the Stay and Play logo, and you saw our Path to Carbon Neutrality logo, those are actually like four feet tall when you're actually in that district. So, they are more than visible to anybody walking by, driving by. So, I just wanted to let you know the enormity of the size of the billboard. And again, our tourism chair is available if you have further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
I'll make three points. As far as it not being electronic, I'm glad to hear that. The only reason I called it an electronic billboard is that's what it says in the packet that was presented to us for approval. I guess that was just an error. The comments that just made by staff are all true, but they have nothing to do with my concerns, nothing at all. So, I have a question for staff. I'll preface it by saying that I think it's important that cities like Flagstaff build partnerships with other cities, for instance, with the city of Phoenix. So, if the city of Phoenix wanted to put a billboard of this size in Heritage Square, would staff support council doing that?
Mayor, council, no. I would not.
Well, I wouldn't either. But I think it's disingenuous for us to not allow something in our city, but we force it on another city. We're not forcing it on them. They make it. But I think for all the reasons you stated and the reasons I stated, I do not support this moving forward.
Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Ms. Hansen, if you could ask to be called upon, I'd really appreciate it to speak, but you are welcome to speak.
My apologies, Mayor. Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy, I can appreciate your hesitation, but I will say that the comparison of the Phoenix downtown and the Flagstaff downtown, I feel is not a comparison. And quite honestly, we have been doing this successfully since 2017. And one of the things that Trace had mentioned, but has mentioned in previous discussions with councils, is that when we're putting together a marketing program, it is not a marketing program based on just print and digital. It is based on print, digital, social, out-of-home, which is what this billboard is, and several other tactics in order for us to get the largest target audience and the most impressions possible to market this destination safely. And so, I just wanted to let you know why we even do installations like this. And again, my apologies, Mayor, for talking out of turn.
No problem at all. Councilmember Aslan, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, thank you. So, I'll start at the end and work backwards here. I, I, I just want to say that I agree that Councilmember McCarthy's logical comparison, I find that a little bit tenuous. But I do continue to stand in solidarity with the point you're trying to make and the philosophical cause that you're taking up. So, I'll just be clear about that from the outset. You know, I, I want to be very clear about a couple other points here, too. I agree with Councilmember McCarthy that everything you've said in the presentation is true. And I, I know we get a little defensive about some of these nitpicky debates on advertising and attraction to Flagstaff. I, I just, I want to be very clear that I agree that we need to spend money to bring people to Flagstaff. You know, it's, I grew up being baffled by a company like Coca-Cola constantly advertising. Why do they need to advertise? Everybody drinks Coke. Well, you know, it's sort of a chicken and egg thing in one level, but in another level, I'm sure the literature is fairly unanimous that ubiquitous advertising really does shape people's minds and can shape trends. So, I, I, I don't want to get hold up, held up arguing the basic merits of business, of attraction efforts to bring people to Flagstaff. I wholeheartedly agree that those are worthy, and they need to be ongoing. You know, and I've, I've seen those billboards. I've had the great fortune of being able to attend Diamondbacks game and also a Suns game this past year. Had a lot of fun downtown Phoenix. Also a wedding in the same area. And those billboards are fabulous. They're absolutely gorgeous. They get me excited. They make me really proud to be a Flagstaff resident and Flagstaff elected leader. I, I want to know whose dog that is. It's an absolutely gorgeous dog. Perhaps Heidi, you even know, Trace, you guys probably know the name of that dog. Anyway, and I greatly appreciate the efforts to showcase our carbon neutrality efforts and that mindset that we have up here. I'd like to see that increase and become an even bigger part of the marketing we do. You know, what I'm, what I'm left with is this, this issue of our billboards right for Flagstaff. I agree with Councilmember McCarthy that it's not something we want up here. And we have to be careful with how we, 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 you know, the cognitive dissonance, so to speak, of having that mandate up here and then being relaxed about it down there. I think there's some wiggle room there. I do. I think Phoenix is different than Flagstaff, and we don't need to have the same concerns in that, you know, urban landscape. But on a dark skies level, I, I believe I noticed, and you're welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, Heidi, but it seems to me, or Blake, someone else who's with Legends, I think is on the call, it seems to me that those, the billboard downtown is lit from below. And one of the best practices for dark sky lighting is to make sure that our lighting is faced downward. And this is just a minor point of a much longer campaign. But I do think we need to create efforts to make sure that we're doing the right kind of lighting all over the state of Arizona to improve dark sky capacity and to decrease light domes throughout the Southwest. And this is getting off topic a little bit, so I'll wrap up here. But I do think we should be supporting billboards when we do, only when they're lit from above and not below, or they are not lit at all after a certain hour at night.
Thank you. I'd be happy to have the individual with Legends Entertainment respond, if you would like. I do see you open up the.
Good afternoon, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me and see me okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm Blake Edwards. I'm the General Manager with the Legends Entertainment District. And first of all, thanks, you know, Trace and Heidi and your team for all the, you know, support on this endeavor. It's been a great partnership for the last five or six years, and obviously, we're, we're hoping we can find an opportunity here to carry it forward. To the council and mayor, you know, I certainly understand your concerns, and I guess I'll try to address a couple of those just on the surface here. You know, one, just the discussion around billboards. And first of all, I would like to tell you that we do not like to consider ourselves a billboard company. There are a lot of billboard companies out there that put sticks on the ground and screens up and, and, you know, messaging on top of those sticks all over town. We don't really feel like we compete in that space. We are a very unique, specially entitled area that frankly was created about 12 years ago to deliver a certain energy vibrancy that goes along with a big city environment and all the great things that are happening in downtown Phoenix. I will tell you that the city of Phoenix leadership, they are not advocates for billboards. They are not interested in putting billboards up all over town. And frankly, if they could eliminate most of the billboards that are out there currently, they probably would. But they do see the value in terms of the presence pieces that we're creating in downtown Phoenix. And like I said, we do not like to categorize those as billboards, and we do not consider ourselves a billboard company. We consider our, our offering more of an experiential marketing opportunity. We really do not have any traditional billboards within the district. Everything is sort of custom-designed, unique placements, large formats, one-of-a-kind, special landmark opportunities, which is what we've been able to create with the city of Flagstaff over the last several years. The types of elements you're seeing on that static billboard, including the 3D boot installation, the extension of the mountains, those are things that are unique to the space. those are things that are unique to the space that we work with you together on and is not something that could be done frankly anywhere else. There's nowhere else in town you would be able to erect a fixed structure like that with those kinds of elements and that kind of presence because the city just does not allow that. So hopefully that helps you understand a little bit about how Legends is positioned and how your presence has been positioned within the district. As it relates to the lighting, again, same thing. We're very cognizant about the types of lighting that goes into the district. All the lighting is very focused lighting. It's directional. You know, I heard the comment about whether it's uplighting or downlighting. We have various units within the district. Some are uplit, some are downlit. But like I said, they're only uplit, the ones that are uplit are only done so in a directional way to focus on the space being lit up and not necessarily focused directly up into the sky. So they're really, if you were down here in the district in the evening hours for a game or a concert or having dinner, I think you'd find that all of that lighting is very low-level, is directional, and is not creating a lot of ambient light through downtown or isn't creating, you know, anything beyond what, you know, a lot of the typical streetlights would create. And I'm fairly confident in saying that. So hopefully I've addressed some of your concerns. If you have questions for me, I'm here and I'm happy to answer them, but just wanted to provide some of that context for you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Blake. We have Vice Mayor, and then we're going to go to Terry on the Tourism Commission, and then McCarthy, or sorry, and then Shimonie and then McCarthy in order.
Thank you. That's a long list. Thank you for all of the information. You know, Legends is located in a designated signage district in Phoenix. That's my number one point. I do believe that with our increase in tourism and with the tourists being from Phoenix, that's our number one destination or where the tourists are from. I think it's crucial that we deliver a message, a message in all forms of media. We need to paint our expectations of what our community values and how we want our tourists to treat our city. And this billboard, I've seen it in person, and I think it's a great way to clearly get that message across. And I am definitely in support of this partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Terry, would you like to jump in?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and a special welcome to our newest council member, Councilmember House. Welcome, and I look so forward to meeting you. Normally, I'm here before you to talk about the Downtown Business Alliance and activities in downtown. Today, I'm here to talk to you as your tourism chairperson. And many of my comments have already been mentioned, so I can be brief. I do want to stress what our Vice Mayor just mentioned, that this is a designated entertainment district. This is not as if the city of Flagstaff is on a billboard on the I-17. This is a very appropriate place where there are millions and millions of eyes that are on this billboard. It is our number one drive market, but seeing even visitors to Phoenix that are going to a game see messaging about the city of Flagstaff, whether it's stay and play responsibly, whether it's about, you know, putts are loved, or whether it's about firewise. We have such an opportunity to reach not just Phoenix residents, but visitors to Phoenix that may be coming up to Flagstaff and share what makes Flagstaff unique and visit-worthy. So it is something that we really support on our commission. We think the team has some wonderful messaging, creative artwork, and we know eyes are seeing it because we see them coming to Flagstaff. And so we really support this item. We support the messaging, and we support the location. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Terry. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll let Councilmember McCarthy go ahead of me if that's okay.
Of course. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mr. Shimonie. We don't need to belabor this. We can come to a vote and resolve it. And I don't know how this will come out, but I just want to state for the record that I do support advertising about our city to bring business here. Tourism is very important. I absolutely support that. The only point I was trying to make is to use a phrase that I just heard someone else say. This is a value message. And the message we're making when we put up an experiential marketing opportunity, otherwise known as billboards, is that we support billboards. And that's completely obvious, and it's contrary to my values. I'll leave it at that. We can have a vote on this and move on.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for the discussions and the presentation and staff. And Terry, just everyone, I just really appreciate this discussion. I know this is a challenging one for us. And Councilmember McCarthy, I appreciate you bringing up your concerns on this topic. You know, I did read the electronic billboard in the agenda and got confused and kind of struggled with it myself, but I'm really glad to hear from the team that it's not an electronic billboard and it's actually a really outside-the-box, more of a creative communication item rather than a billboard. And I think that the word billboard kind of almost gives it a bad, a bad look, a bad rep because I do see value in what it's providing. You know, at first, Councilmember McCarthy, I was really open to what you were saying and leaning towards that same concern that you were sharing. But again, the refresher from Trace and learning more about, you know, what this messaging really does, I feel supportive of this, Mayor and Council, and I encourage us to support it. As Councilmember McCarthy said, we'll see where the vote goes. But I think that we do need to communicate with this market. This is a very intentional way to communicate with this market, and if we were to do any kind of communication, I like the way this one is done. I thought Councilmember Aslan's comments about the lighting angles was interesting and that we can explore that further, but I really appreciated Blake's response about the degree of lighting and how, you know, impactful it was. I, again, appreciate this larger conversation that we're having and appreciate the concerns, but given that it's non-electric, electronic messaging platform and how intentional it is and how much this means to the city of Flagstaff, and as the Vice Mayor said, I would encourage us to support this. Thank you.
Good, Councilmember Shimonie. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I acknowledge and respect Councilmember McCarthy's perspective on billboards. I do want to provide a broader look on the campaigns that the Discover Flagstaff has been embarking on in many years. It brings over 6 million to up to 8 million in BBB bed, board, and beverage tax collection dollars, which is collected by our partners in the industry of tourism, hospitality, restaurants, and attractions, and hotels. It funds all of our programming on parks, recreations, open space, trails, natural areas, beautification, public arts, and sciences. I've seen the campaign in downtown Phoenix, and I feel proud because most of the messaging are toward sustainable ecotourism, which includes the Leave No Trails, Pledge for the Wild, Snow Play Responsibly, Be Firewise, and to become carbon neutral, the pathway to carbon neutrality. And last year, Discover Flagstaff gained an award from the Governor's Office of Tourism for the campaign with Pledge of the Wild in partnership with Flagstaff Trails Initiative. And I believe this expenditure is funded by BBB Tax Collection, and it's budgeted. So with that, as the council liaison to the Tourism Commission, I am honored to make a motion to approve the contract with the Legends District, and I fully support this partnership and our Discover Flagstaff and our Tourism Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis.
I'll second that.
That's seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right, with a 5-2, that does pass. Thank you, everyone. We are down to Agenda Item 10A of our routine items. This is the consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2022-10. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1 to 14 Personnel System by amending the Employee Handbook of Regulations relating to alternative work schedules, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date. Staff recommended action is to read ordinance number 2022-10 by title only for the final time.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Brandy Suda, your interim Human Resource and Risk Management Director. So this is the second read and adoption of the amendment to the Employee Handbook regarding the alternate work schedule. This proposed amendment to the Employee Handbook continues to reflect the city's intent to continue to support flexible scheduling, including telework for positions where it is feasible, but removes the administrative details with the intent to move them to a city manager directive. While much of the current alternate work schedule policy will be maintained, a city manager directive allows the city to be flexible and nimble to make administrative changes to the directive as we identify items that need to be updated through our learned experiences and as the city determines what new hybrid work environment is going to work best for our community and our employees. I, Jeannie Gallagher, and City Manager Clifton are available for any questions.
Thank you. With that, I move to read ordinance number 2022-10 by title only for the final time.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. All those in favor, or any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1-14 Personnel System, by adding the Employee Handbook of Regulations, I'm sorry, by amending the Employee Handbook of Regulations relating to alternative work schedules, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-10.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Agenda Item 10B is the consideration and approval of preliminary plat. TLCPC Land Investors LLC requests preliminary plat for Ghost Tree at Pine Canyon. PZ-21-00155-03 located at 3201 South Clubhouse Circle. A 12-unit, single-family home subdivision on 7.87 acres in the single-family residential R1 zone. Staff recommend action is to approve the preliminary plat.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Genevieve Pair 3, Senior Planner in the current planning section. I'm here to present this request for Ghost Tree at Pine Canyon preliminary plat approval. I don't know what just happened here. Okay. So again, this is from TLCPC Land Investors LLC for preliminary plat approval. It's in Pine Canyon at 3201 South Clubhouse Circle. This is for a single-family subdivision. There are 12 lots on 7.87 acres. It's in the R1 or single-family residential zone. Staff approved the preliminary plat administratively on March 30th, and then P&amp;Z approved it, or excuse me, recommended approval on April 27th, and that was a 6-0 vote in favor. So here's the vicinity map. We can see it's in Pine Canyon in the southeastern part of Flagstaff. It's in the northwestern part of Pine Canyon. So it is part of that larger 660-acre Pine Canyon development. It is one of the last undeveloped tracts. And it has a resource protection overlay, so there are significant slopes and trees. So the subdivision is proposing larger lots and unique building envelopes to protect tree and slope resources. So I'll talk about that a little bit. So here's the plat. We can see the 12 lots. There's also five tracts, one of which is the new private street that will go through the middle of Pine Canyon. And then there's one track that will be reserved for future development in another phase. So there are three findings for approval for plats. They're all related to compliance with city codes. The first one is the zoning code. The second one is engineering standards, and the third one is the subdivision code. So I will just start with the zoning code, and we'll preface that the plat does meet code in all three ways. So the first one is in the zoning code. It does meet the single-family residential standards. So they're in the density range. The lots all meet the minimum size, width, and depth requirements, and they meet those resource protection requirements that I mentioned. So here's the plat. I said that there were unique building envelopes. We can see them here. So that's the area that can be disturbed on each lot for the driveway and for the construction of the houses. So that's how we protect steep slopes and trees. And we can see here, this is their resource protection map showing trees in steep slope areas. We can see there's quite a few of both. So moving on, the second finding for approval is compliance with engineering standards. So again, that's Title 13 of City Code. So in the early 2000s, when Pine Canyon was first developed and approved, there were infrastructure analyses that were conducted for traffic, water, and wastewater and stormwater. So they basically looked at Pine Canyon as it would be when it was fully built out and put in the infrastructure to support Pine Canyon. So that means that very little infrastructure will be needed to support this development. It's really everything on-site. So new water and sewer and the road, again, that private street that I mentioned, and a few stormwater basins to capture rainwater. So we can see here those utilities that are going through the street, as well as those little blue, kind of oblong-shaped things. Those are the stormwater detention basins. So that's all the new infrastructure that's needed to support this plat because everything else around it has already been developed. So the last finding for approval is conformance with the subdivision code, specifically the subdivision and land split regulations. So that's Chapter 11-20. So there's three parts of that. The first is that it meets all the preliminary plat application procedures and requirements, which it does, which is why it's here today. The second is that it meets the minimum required subdivision improvement. So those are all the infrastructure improvements that I mentioned in the previous slides. So it does meet all of those. The last one is compliance with specific standards and regulations for lot size, design, street design, easement, and block design. It meets all of those as well, which is why it's here for you to consider today. So in summary, you will find that this preliminary plat meets the three findings for approval. Again, that's Title 10, the zoning code, Title 11, general plans and subdivisions, and then Title 13. That's the engineering design standards and specifications. So the staff recommendation is that City Council approve the preliminary plat. That's based on compliance with the required findings, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval. So that's all that I have for my presentation. I believe the applicant is here as well. So if you have any questions for them, they can answer those. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Pair 3. With that, I move to approve the preliminary plat in accordance with the findings presented in this report and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations of approval. 6-0 vote in favor on April 27, 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? Councilman Aslan?
Yeah, well, I guess we're taking some opportunities today with these agenda items to discuss some peripheral matters, perhaps. I did have a question. So what's the density here? I'm looking at this 12-unit, single-family homes on 7.87 acres. Can you do the math for me real fast?
Yeah, it's about 1.5 something.
Acres per home?
Units per acre.
Units per acre, thank you. Also, I'm just curious, with Pine Canyon in general, do you know what the rate is of local residents who live in those homes versus second homeownership?
I have no idea. I have no idea. Is the applicant here today? I'm not sure if they would know either, but anyone from Pine Canyon here today?
Hi, Genevieve. This is Todd Severson with Symmetry Companies, representing TLCPC Land Investors. I do not have a specific statistic on the number of primary versus secondary, but I know we do have longstanding and supporting primary residents within the gates of Pine Canyon.
Thank you, that's fine. I'm not going to belabor this too much. I just wanted to take a moment, some space, to just lift up, you know, I don't have any problem with the findings. Obviously, I think this is going to move forward. All the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted. It is frustrating for me as a councilperson, you know, to be in the position of supporting this on the findings when, once again, we're talking about values. And it's just one of those unfortunate moments of tension for me. I think gated communities in general are just really unfortunate. So I'll just state that for the record, I guess. It's probably neither here nor there, but I just really don't appreciate them. I don't appreciate what they stand for. And I also think with a housing crisis in front of us, the council has declared a housing emergency. This kind of zoning and community planning sits in the face of that. It's contrary to what we need in Flagstaff and what we're fighting for here in Flagstaff, which is to keep local residents here in town locally in an affordable manner. And these units are on way too much land, they're way too exclusive, and they're -- the number of units that are being occupied by folks not from Flagstaff who already have a home is way too high. And so I've just taken an opportunity to say those things out loud here at the dais. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
Two points. I was under the impression that this development is gated at night. But in the day, it's free access through the entrance. Am I right?
I believe there was an ordinance passed in, hmm, it was either 2011 or 2013 that requires them to be open during the day.
And Mr. Aslan, you kind of triggered a few things in my little brain. Initially, when this Pine Canyon was laid out, the density was so low that it didn't meet all the city codes. So my recollection was that there was an agreement made that the developer would, to sort of average out the density to a more reasonable number, that they would build a project, and I think it was called Track 22. And I'm just wondering out loud if we should be approving plats in this project when the developer has not fulfilled, and correct me if I'm wrong, has not fulfilled their obligation to build housing in Track 22? There's your question.
I have--
I see some staff people walking up.
Yeah. I have read the development agreement. It's been a while. I do -- I'm aware of Track 22, but I can't quote the specific developer obligations at this point. I will say, just reiterate, that this plat here is a by right project, and it does meet all the findings for approval. Alex, want to add something?
Just FYI, Track 22 is currently under permit review for construction. I don't know the exact density of that, but it's actually denser than what was initially planned for that.
All right. So what you're saying is that it isn't built yet, but it is actually in the conveyor belt, so to speak.
Correct.
I'm very pleased to hear that. I might also mention that there was a lot of controversy about that project, that former councilmember Charlie Oderard and I got very involved in that to try to work out an arrangement between the developer, the city staff, and the neighborhood. And I considered that a very strong success story. I'm really glad to hear that it's something along that line, maybe with some changes, but it's moving forward. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. We do have a motion on the table. If there's any further discussion, Councilmember Aslan.
Yeah, just real quickly. So like I said before, I do think the findings have been met. I'm prepared to approve this with reservations. I just wanted to note for new councilmember House that we love to try to give our city attorneys, Sterling Solomon and his team, aneurysms as often as possible, and just having fun with that a little bit today here. In all seriousness, though, I do have reservations about this, but I will proceed with those grievances being voiced.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
Sorry, too, I'm going to support this because technically it meets it, but I do think it's contrary to our basic goals of providing housing for everyone. On the other side of that, I also realize that we need diversity in housing, maybe some very high-density housing, balanced off with some very low-density. So it meets the technicalities, so I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Councilmember House.
Thank you. I did just want to note, in agreement with both of you, some of the reservations that I had on this, I have no problem voting it forward, but I did have some of the reservations when it came to -- there was mention within the presentation in the packet about this meeting the goal for equity, and I had some questions as to whether or not that was true, as well as some of the considerations when it comes to affordability and those different standards that are placed on affordable housing that create difficulty that I'm not seeing presented as part of this plan. I did have one question in terms of the impact reporting that was done. It was my understanding from the presentation to the Sustainability Commission that because the original impact studies that were done took into account the full development, there wasn't a need to go back and redo those. But from my understanding of what was just shared about the Track 22 and the shift in density for this particular track, is that still true?
So for this, and Alex, I'll let you answer for Track 22, but for this specific project, it is within those. If another one was conducted, needed to be conducted for Track 22, that would have happened? It was all included. So stormwater staff, water services, and traffic all reviewed it and determined that the infrastructure was sufficient and that new impact analyses were not needed.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just, I have it on the comment section. Do not have the hands raised aspect of this up on teams. That would be Sterling.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, I didn't know you could not see hands raised. Just really quickly for council, without going into too much detail. Yeah, we do, I have stopped short of an aneurysm, and our staff, I appreciate that, Councilmember Aslan, but just for everyone's information, there are entitlements here. It is by right, as has already been mentioned, by right under the code. And I think if you have any further questions or further detail, we're always available for an executive session.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. I'll say that I agree with most of my colleagues that have spoken about their concerns. I, too, struggle with this one, but recognize that I'll be voting yes tonight due to a lack of ability to influence this parcel and this project. But it doesn't sit right with me, and I struggle with this type of development. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, there is a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. We're down to agenda item 11A. This is the consideration and adoption of resolution number 2022-19, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting the Arizona State Retirement System Supplementary
Good afternoon, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Brandy Suda, your interim Human Resource and Risk Management Director. So this resolution is adopting the Arizona State Retirement System Supplementary Salary Deferral Plan, which is adopting an additional deferred compensation plan option for eligible city employees effective 7/1 of '22. So Senate Bill 1348 was passed in May of '22, or May of '21, and requires the city to offer a deferred compensation plan through Arizona State Retirement System for eligible employees. In addition, the Arizona Revised State Statutes require cities to adopt all deferred compensation plans via ordinance or resolution, and therefore I am here before you today for this resolution, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. I move to read resolution number 2022-19 by title only.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Agenda item 11B.
Mayor? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, you got to jump in there, don't you? Right on.
It's my 10 minutes of fame. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting the Arizona State Retirement System Supplemental Salary Deferral Plan.
I move to adopt resolution number 2022-19.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Now, we're down to agenda item 11B, which is the consideration and adoption of resolution number 2022-20, a resolution approving binding waivers of enforcement for 29 parcels of land located in the city of Flagstaff. Ms. Rubalcava.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
I think your mic's not on, actually.
Now?
Perfect.
Fantastic. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Christina Rubalcava, Senior Assistant City Attorney. So I'm here to talk to you about some proposed binding waivers of enforcement that we are recommending council approve in response to Prop 207 claims that the city has received. By way of background, on November 17th of 2020, the Flagstaff City Council adopted ordinance 2020-28, and that ordinance made various amendments to the Flagstaff zoning code. We refer to it as high occupancy housing, and some of those changes included requiring a conditional use permit for high occupancy housing, restricting high occupancy housing of four units or more to the pedestrian shed of an activity center, adding parking, bedroom, bathroom, and other requirements. So this year, in February, March, and April, we received Prop 207 claims on behalf of 29 parcels of land, and the owners claimed that as a result of the HOH code amendments that the city adopted, their properties lost a collective $21 million. As we've talked about before, what we call Prop 207 is ARS 12-1134, and it provides that if the existing rights to use, divide, sell, or possess private real property are reduced by the enactment or applicability of any land use law enacted after the date the property was transferred to the owner, and that action reduces the fair market value of the property, then the owner is entitled to just compensation from the city. And so the landowner has to make a written demand for a specific amount of just compensation, which has been done. And then the city has 90 days to pay, amend the law, or permanently waive enforcement of the new land use law on the landowner's parcel. If the city does not act, the landowner may file a claim for just compensation within three years of the date that the land use law took effect. And just compensation for diminution in value is the reduction in fair market value resulting from the land use law, fair market value being the most likely price which the land would bring for sale on the open market. So if approved by council, then the city will agree and declare that the HOH zoning code amendments will not be enforced or applicable to the entirety or any portion of the 29 properties identified in the binding waiver of enforcement attached to the staff summary as Exhibit A to the resolution. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rubalcava. Any questions, council? Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Rubalcava, for this presentation. May I ask you to refresh my memory in terms of council-approved waivers so far with regards to the high occupancy housing? I remember we've already, this may be the third or fourth round that we are approving waivers.
You're correct. I believe it is the fourth round. I think in terms of numbers of property, we're a little over 100. I wonder if Tiffany has a more specific answer?
I don't have it exactly. It's about 120.
120 range-ish, that sounds right.
I'd like to ask council, maybe I'll articulate it now and bring it up as a fair item. Perhaps it's time to review the -- the --
HOH plan.
Yeah, the specific items on the HOH plan that has been inviting Prop 207 claims. So a specific provision of the plan and the ordinance that has been inviting Prop 207 claims, because, you know, we have granted over 120 waivers perpetually waiving the -- or excluding specific properties with regard to HOH and the corresponding ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Any other comments or questions before I entertain a motion? All right, with that, I move to a -- oh, Councilmember Shimonie. Yep, please jump in.
Sorry, I was a very last-second attempt to make a comment. I apologize. Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm fine with us approving these claims and these waivers. I definitely don't think there's a need to review the HOH plan at this moment. My understanding is that the parcels don't cover much of a footprint, but if council desires to discuss this again, I'd be happy to do that, especially with our new elected -- new council member. But I personally just wanted to make it clear, I'm not interested in changing things at this moment, but yeah, I'll let that play out how it does. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. I'll just say, I think any decisions we make, especially as large as the HOH plan, need continuous evaluation. So I applaud Councilmember Solis for suggesting we do that reevaluation, but the decision tonight is regarding these 29 parcels of land, and with that, I move to read resolution number 2022-20 by title only.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember House. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously, City Clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving binding waivers of enforcement for 29 parcels of land within the corporate limits of the city of Flagstaff.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution number 2022-20.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember House. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. It is 4:55 right now, which might be a good time to take a small break in case some of our discussion items here in a little while will be a little longer. So let's take a break and be back here at 5:10 PM start, so 15 minutes. All right, sports fans, let's get back on it here. We are down to agenda item 11C, consideration and approval of lease amendment, Flagstaff Airport Rental Car Concessions, IFB 2011-09A. Amendment to leases with ABUS Budgeted Car Rental -- IFB 2011-09A, amendment to leases with Avis Budget Car Rental LLC, Alamo Rental Car, National Car Rental, The Hertz Corporation, and Enterprise Rented Car Companies, amendment to current leases with current companies for a one-year extension. Staff recommend action is to approve the amendments to the current lease agreements for lease renewal for one year between the city of Flagstaff and Avis Budget, Alamo Rental, The Hertz Corporation, and Enterprise Rented Car Companies, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Bryce Doty, real estate manager. I don't have a formal presentation for this one, but I'm available, myself and Emily Markle, with procurement for any questions you may have. What these leases really do is amend all of our car rentals at the airport. They were created out of a procurement that we did way back in 2010, and those have been amended and extended for successive times throughout the years. They're getting old. It's time to go back to procurement. Last year, we kind of had some initial discussions. Didn't feel like the business climate with the COVID impacts was a good time to go for new bids with the amount of uncertainty. So now we're here today. Our leases have another month ago, and we're thinking this next year is be a great time to formally solicit for new car concessions and get fresh leases, but we're looking for an extension of a year to make that possible. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Doty. I move to approve the amendment to the current leases agreement for lease renewal for one year for the associated companies.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Doty.
Thank you.
Next is agenda item number 11E, consideration and adoption of resolution number 2022-18, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, calling a primary election to be held on August 2nd, 2022, for the purpose of nominating two mayor candidates for the general election. Ms. Saltzberg.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Stacy Saltzberg, City Clerk. I am here before you tonight to ask for an approval of a resolution to call the election of August 2nd, 2022. This election will be a primary election to determine the two top mayoral candidates. At this time, we do not need a primary election for our council member seats, because we did not receive the requisite number of candidates to necessitate such an election. So this is just for the mayoral race.
Thank you. I move to read resolution number 2022-18 by title only. I have a second. Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council, I'm sorry, let me start over. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, calling a primary election to be held on August 2nd, 2022, for the purpose of nominating two mayor candidates for the general election.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution number 2022-18.
Second.
Seconded by McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. We are now down to agenda item 12A, proposed framework for residential solar and electric bike rebates. Nicole, take us away.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. I'm going to share my screen. Just give me a moment to pull that up. And if I may confirm that you can see my screen?
Yep, good to go.
Fantastic. Well, I am pleased to be here this evening to discuss a proposal per the Council's request for a residential solar rebate program and an electric bike rebate program. Let's see, it does not seem that my monitor is advancing. There we go. Let me try this. Fantastic. All right, so for our agenda this afternoon or this evening, I will first review a framework for a residential solar rebate program, then an electric bike rebate program, and then we'll move on to a discussion. So what I'd like to start with is just why a residential solar and electric bike rebate framework. The Carbon Neutrality Plan, which was adopted by the City Council in 2021, guides equitable solutions for mitigating and adapting to local climate change threats and reaching carbon neutrality by 2015. Both the frameworks in front of the Council this afternoon emphasize the need to decrease Flagstaff's dependence on fossil fuel-derived energy and shift toward renewable energy sources, also to decrease Flagstaff's dependence on gasoline-powered vehicles and increase multimodal travel options to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and encourage healthier lifestyle. So the Carbon Neutrality Plan identifies a key tool for achieving carbon neutrality, and that is helping to facilitate 10 megawatts of residential solar, and that's looking at an average system size that would translate to about 5 kilowatts per home, which would necessitate about 2,000 residential installations. And we know from our previous work with Solar United Neighbors Northern Arizona Co-op that our community has a very big interest in residential solar. You'll hear more from us next week on the launch of our Round Two of the Solar Co-op. But we are pleased to say that a total of 641 kilowatts were, are in the process or have been installed through the Solar Co-op that we launched last year. And the proposed structure for the residential rebates builds on the Solar Co-op's momentum. Now, I just want to offer a reference, and on average, and this is on average, a 5-kilowatt system is roughly about $11,000. So as we go through the next few slides, just keep that in mind. So we've created three scenarios for the Council to consider, and they vary by dollars per kilowatt rebate. And our research shows that this varies from state to state. It can be $100 per kilowatt or up to $650 per kilowatt. And it is also based on solar system equipment credit research that the dollar amount of percentage of solar panel systems costs paid to the homeowner in the form of a rebate or state tax deductions. We've built-in features of equity, and we really think it's important to add a component to assist low-income community members. And so the options in front of you will also include an income-based flat rebate to assist with installation costs. Our research suggests that installation costs are the biggest barrier, which is probably no surprise, and the biggest barrier to middle and low-income families when considering to go solar. Now, what you have in front of you on the next few slides is an assumption based on a $50,000 budget. I would like to note that in the city manager's budget that was presented to the Council and will be moving forward for consideration and adoption by resolution next month, the Sustainability Office has been awarded, if you will, a $25,000 budget for this program. But for the sake of this exercise, I believe that you will have a good sense of impact scenarios. So again, all scenarios that you'll see on the next three slides are based off of a $50,000 budget. Now, the first scenario is a moderate incentive that is based on a $250 per kilowatt rebate. Now, on the left-hand side of the screen is an all-low-income customer impact analysis. To the right is a no-low-income customer impact analysis. And again, this exercise is just to see what that framework and the range of what we can create with programming. So as I mentioned, this first scenario is a moderate incentive that is based off of $250 per kilowatt. The low-income component incorporates a flat rebate of $3,500 for low-income members. So the maximum rebate per household would be $4,500. With a $50,000 budget, we can assume that 11 households would be served through this program. Now, if we looked at a no-low-income customer component at $250 per kilowatt, we can see that we could potentially reach 50 households. The next scenario is a more aggressive incentive that increases the kilowatt rebate up to $450, and this is based on a similar model before where there is the income-based flat rebate of $3,500. Now, the maximum rebate per household for low-income customers would be $6,500, serving just under eight households. In this scenario, with the no-low-income component, we could potentially serve just under 17 total households. And in the final scenario, which is a very aggressive maximum incentive, it increases the kilowatt rebate up to $650. So again, for the all-low-income customers, this would serve just under six customers, which maximum rebate of about $8,500. And in the no-low-income customer component, so that income-based flat rebate is removed, we could serve about 10 households. I did want to add just some additional information. As we were doing research for the framework, we did see some unique and compelling examples from aspiring programs. And so, for example, our friends in Fort Collins, Colorado, add rebates for additional solar equipment appliances, specifically battery storage. Our friends in Vermont and Columbia, Missouri, also have additional rebate programs for solar water heaters. Now, moving on to electric bikes, sustainability staff were also asked to put a proposal together for electric bikes, and similar to the residential solar, the Carbon Neutrality Plan identifies a key goal of maintaining vehicle miles traveled to be held at 2019 levels. And so by the year 2030, that would be a 17% reduction in vehicle miles traveled. In addition, it calls for all remain, 30% of all remaining miles to be electric vehicle miles. And we know from our previous Bike Share pilot that we conducted a few years ago that our community has an appetite for bicycle commuting. The proposed framework would also support local businesses. So here is the framework that we are proposing, and it's modeled after the city's Sustainable Automotive Sales Tax Rebate Program, which is headed up by our Economic Vitality folks. And this features an income-based equity component. This assumes that there's a $25,000 annual budget, which is in the city manager's budget that was discussed last month. For a local purchase of either a Class 1 or Class 2 electric bike, the rebate would be $200. We also want to inspire retrofitting, excuse me, the rebate would be $250. We also want to inspire retrofitting bikes by providing electric bike conversion kit rebates of $200. And again, we believe it's incredibly important to assist our low-income community members, and so we have proposed an income-based component of this rebate for households that are less than 80% of the AMI. There would be an additional $250 incentive for bikes and conversion kits, but not to exceed 100% of the cost. Now, for reference, electric bikes can range anywhere from $800 to $3,000-plus. Conversion kits can range from $300 to $900. So similar to the previous chart she saw for the residential solar, this is the table that compares an all-low-income customer impact analysis versus a no-low-income customer impact analysis. And you can see here with the incentives, we could potentially serve up to 50 customers with a $25,000 budget for low, all-low-income impact analysis, and up to 100 participants with the no-low-income customer analysis. My apologies for the technology hiccups I'm having, but I think you can still see my screen. Now, moving to the conversion kits. As I mentioned, these can range in cost from $300 all the way up to $900. And as we can see here, with the all-low-income customers, we could service or provide rebates to almost 56 community members, and with no-low-income customers, 125. And this is, of course, estimating that the proposed budget is $25,000. So I want to make sure that that's clear. In the previous slide, this program is designed to be blended together with this budget. But for the sake of this exercise and impacts, I thought it would be important to incorporate that for the Council. And similar, as we were doing our research for electric bikes and residential solar, we found some really interesting aspiring programs to be considered, such as electric ride vehicles, rebates for electric ride vehicles such as e-scooters and segways. And we also saw examples for bike accessory purchases, such as helmets and lights and racks and locks, as well as incentives for businesses to convert their vehicle fleets to electric bike fleets. A fun, inspiring note in today's news, the state of Massachusetts is working on a statewide rebate program to provide incentives for e-bike purchases focused on vehicles used by commuters and/or delivery applications. So that was some fun news today. And that is the framework I have for the Council discussion, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions regarding this, Council?
Sure.
Comments, Councilmember Aslan?
And I might struggle through this question a little bit. Maybe you can help me out, Nicole. So I guess where this is coming from is an underlying assumption based off of my personal experience. I'm not one to have ever really taken advantage of rebates. I just don't know when they're out there. I don't make purchasing decisions based off of rebate availability. It's usually a surprise, a welcome surprise after the fact. So I guess it's sort of a, where's the needle on the decision-making process through all of this? How, and how does that work as you move down the scale of AMI? There's some assumptions built in there that I want to explore, if not challenge. But, and it's also, I have some questions about whether or not this really addresses inclusionary considerations. I'm just taking a stab here, and this is very, very low resolution, just sort of broad stroke. But my guess would be, and sorry for the bluntness of it, but I guess I'm just gonna stumble through this. A white family is gonna be more likely to take advantage of and seek out and know about rebates than a family of color. And that's just a totally broad assumption, and I apologize if it's totally off the mark. But it's where I'm coming from in the back of my head while thinking about this. I'm wondering if you would be able to speak to that. And really, the purpose of the question is getting at the effectiveness of getting these rebates to where they need to be in order to get more diverse clientele, taking advantage of these opportunities, and electrifying the city of Flagstaff for carbon neutrality.
Mayor and Councilmember Aslan, thank you for that question. And you're right on point. It's a worthy discussion. And as staff, we, again, were asked to bring this framework forward for the Council to consider. And when we did our research of programs from across the nation, our first filter was equity in looking at programs to try to assist our lower-income community members to take a step towards residential solar or to purchase of an electric mobility device such as a bike. And so with that in mind, that is why we wanted to provide the Council with a framework that has a focus on providing a heftier incentive to low-income community members by...
By no means is this something that we are set in stone on in terms of building the framework. But what I wanted to be able to do this afternoon was to provide information to the council for consideration and then look to the council for direction if this isn't hitting the mark. In regards to education and outreach, you're absolutely correct. When we look at residential solar versus electric bikes, impacts are going to be significantly higher in terms of accessibility in electric bikes. That's also making an assumption that individuals have mobility, that their ability to purchase these units is complementary of their lifestyles and so forth. We also have to look at the demographics in our community and the number of individuals that actually are homeowners in our community as well. So there's a lot of elements and layers here when we start talking about equity. My hope is that in moving forward, we actually, and you'll be hearing more from us next week in terms of an update on the Carbon Neutrality Plan, but we have actually brought together groups. We have a business advisory group, a youth group, and our applications for our equity group close next week. My hope is that we can really look to these resources and our community members to say, hey, we have this program, we're building the framework for it, how do you believe that it will be most equitably distributed and most accessible to our community? My sense is that, especially with the electric bike rebate, is we need to go to our community members, and we need to start having those conversations and sharing the information that there are resources out there. But as you can see with the financial breakdowns, that we're not going to be moving the needle tremendously. And that's where, for example, with the residential solar, the additional launch of Solar United Neighbors Round 2, in our first round, we saw roughly a 20% savings in the cost of solar that was installed. And we're hoping that coupled with a rebate, it can broaden the customer base. And again, you know, to answer your question in terms of access, and I think you had made mention perhaps about the, perhaps some of the data points, could you reiterate that component of your question, please?
I didn't invoke any data specifically.
Oh, okay.
Just challenging the notion that we should be coupling low-income and diversity. Those are two very different things, and we shouldn't make the mistake of just using one as a rubric for success. That's all, you know, and you don't have to keep going on this. I have no doubt we could talk about these aspects all evening, for sure. I just wanted to give voice to them a little bit as considerations for the larger discussion we're going to have right now. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
You, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember McCarthy.
One thing I noticed, Nicole, was that you were proposing rebates for Type 1 and Type 2 electric bikes. And I don't remember the details, but one of those are not allowed on our footstools. Is it Type 3? Well, anyway, so I don't remember all the details, but my comment, I'll just do it in general terms. I don't think we should be giving rebates for bicycles that would not be allowed to be on the footstools. And if you set it up that way, that's fine, and I respect that. I also kind of wonder, you know, I guess when I went through this, I was kind of surprised at how few people would actually benefit from this program. And, you know, it also occurs to me that we're sort of subsidizing one part of the community at the expense of the rest of the community. I kind of wonder if this should go before the voters, before we really implement it, at least on a medium-to-large scale. So that's my only thoughts for now.
You, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Nicole. I really appreciate your work on this and this topic in general. I really also appreciate the focus on equity. And Nicole, are you looking for us to give direction about Options 1, 2, or 3? Or just, are you seeking input?
Yeah, I'm seeking input. Again, I was asked to bring a framework back to the council for discussion on both residential solar and electric bike rebates. My hope is that with this direction, that we can then take it to our Equity Advisory Group as well for input as we launch into bringing in more voices and to framing our programming.
Okay, very good. So I think in terms of the solar component and the three options, okay, another quick question before I give you my comment. So I think I understood that you said there was $25,000 allocated, but it was built around a $50,000 framework. Is that correct?
Yes, and this presentation was submitted to, it was pushed back, it was submitted prior to the budget discussions last month. And so, yes, both programs are currently piloted at $25,000 each.
Okay, and so $25,000 for the solar and $25,000 for the e-bike?
Yes, correct.
Okay, gotcha. And so when we're looking at the charts that talk about the Options 1 and 2 and 3, that's assuming $50,000 for each category, whether it's low-income. So to Councilmember McCarthy's point, you know, I agree. A little disappointing to see how little impact this can have, but, you know, it's a start, council, and I support that start. So I think a mix of the different options makes sense to me, but I'd say with a higher value on equity. So when we talk about the moderate and more aggressive incentives, I like to see that prioritized through the lens of equity. And then for the first more, I think Option 1, we can do that for all populations, and that will get us the most thing for our buck, and that will give us some good data about who's interested and who's taking advantage of this. But yet, creating opportunities for further rebate opportunity for low-income and that population. So hopefully that makes sense, Mayor and council, and Nicole, on the topic of solar. On the topic of the bikes, I fully support it. Nicole, I think I saw you nodding your head. Councilmember McCarthy, we aren't creating rebates for Class 3. It's just Classes 1 and 2, which are allowed on our foots. And I have no issue with us investing as a city in this, as we do on other rebate fronts. This makes a lot of sense through the lenses of neutrality plans and goals and all the things that we value. So, and Nicole, I love that we're expanding this to consider helmets, lights, locks, and racks. Often, this population who does communicate, commute in town, there are 30% of our community that doesn't have access to a car, for whatever reason, and rely on bikes and walking and buses. And often, lights and helmets and locks and racks can be a real barrier. So again, thank you, and yeah, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Nicole. I guess, where do I start? I have an e-bike, and I also have solar on my home. And I did not get an incentive rebate, but boy, that would have made things a lot easier for me. I think the challenge will be, how do we get the word out to those that really need that information? And I do challenge you to maybe come up with a concrete plan on that and maybe come back to us with that. I'd like to know for me. But I, too, I'm with Councilmember Shimon that I really believe that we need to look at this through the equity lens, and I'm so glad that you brought that into the presentation. And I do like the future elements on both solar and the bike, the e-bikes. Those are also great additions to the program. And I think we do need to start somewhere, and I think this is a great start. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll throw my two cents here. Amidst the options, you know, with the limited funds, I think it would be great to pilot this at the moderate level as opposed to a more aggressive approach. With the, you know, low-income incentives, or not incentives, but rebates that will be higher for individuals who are of a lower income. And then we can use that pilot to understand how much we might need more or what incentives could be improved to help individuals utilize it. But I will tell you that with the car rebate for electric vehicles and hybrids, you know, that, I utilized that a couple of years ago. And the fact is, is that then word spread about a year later that, oh, hey, I actually got a rebate from the electric vehicle. And then all of a sudden, last fall, it was boom. So many people were utilizing that we ran out of funds for it, right? Right away. And a lot of this is going to be spread by word of mouth, and even though we, some individuals might go in and say, oh, I didn't realize that there was a rebate. Well, when they do, they're going to tell a friend, right? And that's going to spread. And I think that starting at this moderate incentive level, just as a starters, will help get the word out, and then we can see about potentially expanding it in the future. So I appreciate the multiple options, and that's just my suggestion, is I really appreciate all this being put together, but let's, let's start with kind of the Scenario A right here as opposed to being too aggressive right away, and then only a handful of people get it, and then only a handful of people tell their friends, et cetera, et cetera. So anyways, that's where I stand with these options and where to, how to proceed.
Great. Well, thank you for- Thank you for- Yeah, thank you for the comments and guidance, and we will be back in front of the council with a recommended approach, and I appreciate the time.
You, Nicole. Councilmember Aslan, and then Councilmember Solis.
Yeah, I appreciate you trying to wrap up there, Nicole. I just wanted to say one thing before I regret not having been able to say it. So again, this is another part of this concept that I'm just struggling through a little bit. Maybe you can articulate it better than me. And I think this is more true for the e-bikes. Also, I'm wondering why it's e-bikes and not just bikes, but that's a whole nother conversation we can have about this. So I want to make sure that these rebates are going to folks who are looking to buy an e-bike, who are intending to engage in the practice of using their bike to cut down on their carbon footprint, and not just an opportunity for someone who wasn't, this wasn't even really on their radar, and they're just taking advantage of a great deal. And I don't want to preclude someone in that second category from the, from the potential of this becoming a life-changing opportunity and experience that they never knew they were going to have, and they start biking all the time, right? But, you know, as an author, I can sort of draw a little bit of analogy here. I learned a long time ago never to give away books. If you give away books, people will politely take them, but they're never going to get read. You need to provide people with something that they're wanting and that they're asking for. I would, I would hate for a bunch of bikes to be purchased using this rebate program that just collect cobwebs in a garage or a closet somewhere. So just keep that in mind as you're, as you're working through the strategy on how to do the outreach and who to target and how to create the most positive change outcomes for the goals that we're looking at. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for, for the city manager, just looking into the staff report, which typically has the financial impact or budgetary, budgetary impact. So the proposed program speaks of $50,000 for solar rebate and $25,000 for e-bike, hopefully slash bike in general rebate. So is this budgeted in the current fiscal year? And is there room for, will it be, or will it be proposed for a higher amount in the next fiscal year's budget? I just want to have like an overview of, you know, having this program sustained if we started.
Thank you for the question. I will defer to Nicole and/or others from finance on this. I, I believe this is not a yearly project, but one that may have successful warrant consideration for, for an ongoing program. But I believe the rebates here being talked about, this is for the upcoming budget year, Nicole? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And, and very similar to all the other programs, for the council members that are familiar with many of our programs, we do like to pilot programs to assess impact, and that's exactly what we would do going into the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Does that address your question, council member?
Yes, meaning I just, I just want, so we don't have it budgeted for the current fiscal year, which will be over in the next couple of months, anyway.
I, thank you. May I respond, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I see Nicole nodding her head, yes. So that's an affirmation. I will note, as the mayor pointed out too earlier in the discussion, we certainly had, have had rebate programs for the electric car purchase, and that has been quite successful. That, that is not an ongoing program, but rather one that, that has been addressed on a year-to-year basis, a bit like a pilot project, as Nicole mentioned, but I think it's a similar comment. We would need to have that discussion each year and see if the program can continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer up with the e-bike conversation. If it weren't an e-bike, I don't know if I would, would be riding my bike, a regular bike, as much as I do my e-bike. An e-bike provides me a way to get up three huge hills to my house after a long day of work. I can have a lot of my bookwork, and now I have, you know, my, my store work, and now my council work in the saddlebags on the side. And I know that Councilmember Shimon can ride everywhere, but not all of us can. So I just wanted to provide that information, that I think the e-bike truly has gotten me out of my car quite a bit, and I do use it as a commuter. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up. All right. I'm not seeing further comments or questions at this time. Was there additional direction or anything you need from, from council moving forward on this?
No, thank you, and apologies for attempting to end the conversation early.
No problem.
I appreciate all the feedback, and it is definitely in accordance and in line with our philosophy. So I look forward to bringing in exciting and accessible program framework before you.
Thank you very much, Nicole. And one thing I would like to ask to, to look into is, how many low-income individuals are actually putting solar on their homes? So I just kind of, what are the demographics and the income brackets, et cetera, that are able to do it? And we can better analyze kind of the price point that might incentivize somebody who's 80% AMI, which is, what, about $43,000 a year for a household? What would it really take for them to be able to put solar on their home? And anyways, just, just want to throw that out there. If we're trying to target low-income customers, then we are wanting to make sure it's something that will actually incentivize them, because even if we do a two-tier, well, maybe it all goes into the not-low-income customers. So anyways, I was just curious about that and what the demographics are associated, so that way we can better target individuals to incentivize. Thank you much. Thank you much. All right. With that, moving right along, we are to general public participation. Ms. Salzberg, Annie, do you have? Nope, nothing at this time. So we will move into Agenda Item 14, informational items two from mayor, council, and staff, and future agenda item requests. Let me do, I'm gonna go in roll call order, how about that this time around? Which throws you on the spot, Vice Mayor.
And here I go. Let's see, I was at the Viola Awards, and it was a great time. I saw a few of you there, and congratulations to all of the winners. Monday, I did participate, speaking of bikes, in the kickoff to the Flagstaff Bike Month. And that was a lot of fun and got to see a few community members out there. And as a reminder, this Friday is First Friday Art Walk downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Aslan.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember House, if there was the roll call list, you'd be next.
I don't have anything today, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy.
I see on the table over here some sunflowers. And that makes me think of solidarity with the Ukrainian people. And that is definitely in my heart right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Salas.
Last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the grand opening and ribbon-cutting of the Evergreen Academy Preschool. This is a partnership of Quality Connections, in which I serve on the board, executive board, in partnership with the YMCA, which is the location of the preschool, and with a grant from United Way and with guidance from Elevate Pre-K. So this is, this has evolved from the previous program of Quality Connections called QC Kids that offered free childcare to Quality Connections employees. So this one, this time it has expanded to be offered to the community. So it provides a critical need for high-quality childcare while serving as a job training center for qualified workers with disabilities. That is also part of a program for Quality Connections and with affordable rates to members of our communities. So they have, they actually have an infant, infant to less than a year, and then a year to two and a half years old age group, and then two and a half to five years old age groups. So, and everyone in the community is invited to check it out and sign up. I think there is room for 35 kiddos to be in the childcare facility. Of course, and it's in the Y, too, so great facility.
You, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody. Good meeting this evening, today. Last week, I had the opportunity of being a panelist on Town Hall Discussion on Mental Health Substance Use and Homelessness. We had a good discussion. I wasn't able to stick around the whole time, but it was, it was great to be part of it and represent, and to be able to discuss a lot of the things that we're working on at the city and amongst our community partners. And that leads into the housewarming event that many of us were at for the Crown, being put on by Flagstaff Shelter Services. Congratulations to the whole FSS team and to yourself, Councilmember House, for all of your engagement in that and hard work. And it's a very, it was a very exciting event to be at. Big shout out to Creative Flagstaff and all the Viola Awards nominees and winners. That was a lot of fun to witness that and see everybody's faces, smiling faces, and kind of feel a sense of normalcy again, although we are not through this pandemic. It was, it was a really nice event at the Orpheum. And as others have mentioned, Bike Month kickoff did occur. Folks, visit flagstaffbiking.org. It's the Flagstaff Biking Organization website, and it has all the events listed, including how to win prizes by tracking your rides and the entry into the raffle. So go visit flagstaffbiking.org and ride your bike, especially this month. And tomorrow, the Coconio County Recovery Court graduation is occurring for the first time since COVID. It's every first Wednesday at noon, and I invite everyone to attend and be part of that and help celebrate these graduates and their hard work. And then Saturday, Dishing for Kids is having a event at McPherson Disc Golf Course. They have modified the course, and it's from 9:00 a.m. till noon. And it's for all ages and all skill levels. So it's a lot of fun for kids to play disc golf, and I hope folks take advantage of that opportunity. And then lastly, Councilmember Salas, thank you for that update on Quality Connections efforts with the childcare facility. That's wonderful. And again, welcome, Councilmember House. Glad to have you amongst us, and cheers to the city and cheers to the council. Appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. I am wholeheartedly very happy we're a council of seven right now. And thank you, Councilmember House, for being with us and really looking forward to your contributions to the team here. Aside from that, I don't have too much. I'm real curious about what's going on outside, because I'm hearing all the shouting of applause from up front. And so I can leave it at that, but I'm city manager, if you want to, if you have anything for us.
I believe we have a, I don't want to call it a protest, but a rally in support of women's rights stemming from the information today from the Supreme Court.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, meeting adjourned.